Now I'm trying to get. Pack it up here. And Keely is there, perfect.
Sorry, I'm trying to get more packet up here.
No worries. It's like Mike's burning the midnight oil.
Yes, he is.
Happy to be here.
One o'clock, one thirty in the morning?
Yeah, it's like Poland.
That's commitment.
I think the worst is behind the county. Had covid and those and Peru and we just went to it was like five AM my time and we had a six hour. There's Little Mountain, Continental Court, and then the Gape Church.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Overnight camping and it was like this endless conversation about whether there should be wide open camping or not. Soon you could decide this whole area thing. I wouldn't think Peru would be that off in terms of time zones. Oh, and Danny was the lawyer representing the three.
Well, that explanation.
Yeah. He made a lot of money that day.
He read it in its entirety as thirty page brief.
Yeah. Actually Keith Gallagher was telling me, he said, you know, Danny, we read the brief beforehand. Okay. You're still on. You're still on it?
Mm hmm.
We have meetings. They just can't, they canceled July.
It is five thirty-three and I will call the planning commission meeting of seven sixteen to work.
All right.
Can we get a little?
Absolutely. Mr. Fractor. Mr. Giller. Is remote, Mr. Lees?
Here.
Ms. Proper. Mr. Garrett?
Here.
Ms. Gort?
Here.
And Ms. Ambrose?
Here.
Planning Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes? You guys online, any changes?
None for me.
Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes proposed.
As part of the certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. If you are attending the meeting by phone, please press nine on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
No one online.
And doesn't appear to be any public comment from the audience. Okay, with that, we will go to the first item. Is there, we have something? Yeah, we do. We have the consent calendar Beaver Run Resort Master Sign Plan. PL twenty twenty-four oh two four six. Any call-ups there? No. With that, I guess we can move straight on to the work session.
All right. Yes, I will present, present from here. I think we're expecting Nicole Shepherd, who is the applicant in this case for a space at three oh two South Main Street. It's a two hundred and twenty-eight square foot retail space currently, part of the shops at Old South Town or Old South Main. And let's see if we can just go to a picture of the exterior of what it looks like, but really, the applicant has been quite patient. She approached the town about converting the space to a espresso bar in March. And at the time, we were working on revisions to our employee generation summary, which you may recall, originally, we adopted our employee generation summary based on the Town of Vales generation information several years ago. And we knew that that was something that we needed to to really do a study, but we wanted to wait until businesses were more up to a normal staffing lever level after covid because really, when we originally adopted it, so many businesses were having a hard time filling positions. So we wanted to have a a study that reflected a more true, you know, full employment. So there was an initial work session by the council recently in June to look at these numbers. And in general, you know, I think staff had some had good feedback relative to the revised employee generation numbers. But there are so many different categories in there that it's not a, you know, quick fix. The council wants to, you know, wants to get it right since we are trying to really peg it to this community. But one of the things that really stands out is we're going from one food and beverage use to seven different categories within it. The current one within policy twenty-four A is a one size fits all. So it could really be anything like from, you know, a single person espresso bar like this application to a full-service restaurant, where you have all kinds of, you know, extra kitchen staff, bussers, waitstaff, host staff, those types of things. So normally when we, when we have a request for an exemption, we, it says in the code to have a third-party study performed. But in this case, since we did have a third-party study recently completed, we, we told the applicant that, you know, this would suffice really to meet that need. And we also thought that this, due to the timing of it, that they've been waiting a couple of months and we know that, you know, the council is working very diligently on this, but this could, you know, take a couple more months to get, get right. We thought based on really the small scale of the proposal, combined with that, we do have some preliminary numbers that indicate there wouldn't be any additional requirement of employee housing. Based on the type of use, we thought the work session was their best option for being able to kind of move forward and, and open their business. So we did, we did provide a, you know, a comprehensive memo. It shows both what the current employee generation rate is in, in all the, in all the math behind it, and then also what the proposed conversion would be utilizing our latest employee generation numbers provided by our consultants. So with that, we're, we're supportive of the exemption, but we would really like to hear from, from the planning commission.
Okay, we can start with commissioners' questions and Alan, I'll start with you. You have any questions for?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So there's, I just wanted to confirm, there's going to be no seating inside?
That's correct. Yeah, they, they have basically committed to no seating.
Okay.
And, and no food service.
No food, okay. So and are those going to be conditions that will be?
That would be if they, if they wanted to switch, they would. Cliff and I were actually oddly enough on a different site visit for unrelated topic in here. And so we looked in the window and they kind of have the footprint of where the bar is.
Okay.
And realistically, the, the gap between the bar and kind of that front door, front window is probably about here. So if you have a, a line of, you know, four people, there, that's pretty much the space. So it really would be pretty physically impossible to have any seating in there. And then really, once you get beyond that, that front porch, then you're out into the town right away.
Okay.
There. So I mean, I guess they could, they could come back and say, we want one, you know, four-top or something out there in the future and that would maybe, you know, change the use. But I think, you know, she owns a business that's actually in the historic building just to the south and I thought, you know, she's been dealing with, working with Robin for years from having that space and the space became available and it was a new concept for.
And food, what do you mean? It's like they may have packaged prepared food that you can just grab, but they're not going to do any
to order it proper and no sandwiches, burritos or stuff like that. Correct. Yeah. Like if you were just selling prepared food, packaged food, that actually qualifies as retail. Where you wouldn't need a food beverage license for that, although they will need a food and beverage license to prepare coffee.
Okay.
Uh, drinks on site.
Okay, that's all. Only questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we're going from ten people per thousand feet to two point four. Is that right? I don't understand what we're doing here.
So basically, under the new one, you know, going from just the one size fits all retail food and beverage, you know, the, the current one shows, sorry.
Or there's a table. I can't seem to find it right now. It shows the.
Ten point two per thousand for, for eating and drinking establishments under the existing code. Under the recommendations for the, the recommended employee generation numbers, proposed bar without food service goes to, yeah, two point seven three employees per thousand square feet. And then the retail actually goes up to two point nine five. So that's why there wouldn't be, under that scenario, there wouldn't be a requirement for any employee mitigation for this type of use converting from retail to a bar.
So council is wanting to change these to more accurate or different categories. Two point seven three is pretty much industry standard.
Well, I think it's actually based off of the surveying they did within our, our specific. The town contracted the, this, this company to conduct a, a unique employee generation summary. So from reaching out to in the back in the appendix, it shows how many different businesses they reached out to. And this was either the median or the average number of employees for this type of, type of business. You know, for some of the other ones, there's a, there's a higher number. Like if you're going down to like.
Washers and.
Yeah, if you're even going up to like a fast food counter service, which would be more like, we had the previous work session, like Subway or For Real was one that came in, that would actually would be a three point five, which is still significantly lower than the ten point two, but is up because they are preparing food on site in addition to just, you know, working the counter. And then, you know, there's the various, like whether it's outdoor space for, you know, full-service dining. And if, based on what percentage is outside space, it really gets into some like unique, you know, situ- situations like that.
So is this going to encourage more grab and go, which encourages more not using dishes that are not recyclable and um, I just kind of trying to think of like the repercussions down the line of having tons of grab and go.
I mean, I guess I'm not sure if that is the effect because they still have to pay, you know, they'll pay higher PIFs than retail. So they'll still have to pay because there'll be more water usage and, and, and also corresponding with more sanitation PIFs either. It's not like it's to be a zero-sum investment. They'll still have some impact fees. This basically is trying to like establish the correct line for how many employees are generated out of this type of operation. I mean, I think one other thing to look at, this is probably in some ways similar to like a large vendor cart where we don't require any employee mitigation. It's, you know, they are there usually by themselves. I mean, it is, that is a smaller footprint, but if you look at the, the footprint of the area where they're prepping the coffee, it's actually probably about the same size as that. Where the difference being the people are waiting outside for the product versus standing in that small area inside. But I, yeah, I think, I think the goal of this really isn't to encourage or discourage different types of uses. It's, it's, it's trying to like make sure that certain, new businesses are accommodating or, or, or providing employee mitigation for the types of use that they are proposing.
So they would still have to provide a third for their one employee or whatever it calculates out to with the new number?
Well, in, in this case, because they have a credit from the previous one, there isn't anything required based on, based on that, because the number for retail under this is two point nine five employees per one thousand square feet. And the proposed bar without food service is two point seven three employees per square foot.
Okay. So it's kind of grandfathered in because it didn't have.
Well, if, if this were just adoptive, it'd say, well, you're going actually to a less intense use relative to to the land use. You're not actually increasing. Whereas if you're going to just up the next rung, which is that fast food, then they would have to provide for the gap between
Increase.
Three point five and the two point nine five.
So you just do the increase based on the space that was there before. I was looking for that. Okay. All right, that, that clears up a lot in my mind. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I know it gets confusing really fast when we start.
Just want to make sure I understand it. So will they be able to take that credit and take it to a different, because I, I believe they own another business in that area.
They do, but like basically with both employee mitigation and and water PIFs, or if they have to pay in the parking district, it runs with the land. You can't take that, you can't open a restaurant and then decide to move locations down the street and say, well, I already own this business here. I'm going to take all that credit and move two blocks away and then have the landlord start over. It, it runs with the land is how, how our credits work relative to all those types of things.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Chris, can you remind me, we, we made exceptions at the For Real? And did we also do it for the Highside?
For the tap house? Yeah.
Pressure us on, on what we did there?
And for that, they provided a, you know, a, a, a third-party study, basically showing what their employment level was. And, and at the, at the end of the day, I'm trying to think, they, I think they had a reduced
Right.
One, I think in the case of For Real, there wasn't anything additional because I think they showed like X percent of their food, you know, food sales is to go anyway.
Right. They just did a small expansion into that
Yeah.
space to the to, towards Main Street.
Yeah.
Highside, it was a little, I think, over a thousand square feet of space. And per the requirements, it'd have been like ten employees, you know, if it was full restaurant. But they brought in a bunch of examples from other type of businesses and the amount of employees that were generated by like a tap house. And it was more in the two point five to three.
That's right. I'm remembering that now.
And, and so the number ended up being similar to this, the same or less than the retail number that was assigned to it previously. So they didn't have to provide any employees.
Right. Okay. So the exception that we granted For Real, we, we granted them exception because we determined they weren't generating more employees.
Correct.
And then with, with Highside, it was simply that they weren't creating more employees with their expand, with, with the, because they're not really a restaurant.
Right.
Trying to set that all in my, in my mind.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question.
There was a slight change of use there, was there not?
Right. It was retail previously, Mark.
Right.
And it came a tap house, but because the numbers are so low for a tap house, and that's played out in the new study as well, that there wasn't, we did, the planning commission determined and the council agreed that there wasn't a need to require additional employee mitigation.
And I remember they, Axel was making that, that argument saying that, and, and backing it up with some studies, saying that really they, they, the tap house required one employee to run it.
Yeah. I mean, that, I think end of the day, we ended up coming up in at like two
Right.
something, but it was still under the number that was.
Right, right. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's true. If you go in there, a lot of times there is a lot of times only one employee in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get used to it.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Susan?
Uh, yeah, thank you. So this space is going from a retail space to this espresso bar. Has, is it the same owner for both?
No, well, Robin Theobald owns all the spaces here and, and the.
I don't mean the physical space. I mean, the, the business.
Uh, no, there is a different retail that previously rented that. And so that space became available. The, the applicant owns a retail store that you can see the building. It's just below Keely there. Owns the down-low mercantile right, the next door in the, the historic building. And then I think, you know, she already is a tenant of Robin's. And so when that space opened up, you know, I think she, either Robin approached her, she approached Robin and was like, oh, that actually would be a great spot for us, the small espresso bar and started pursuing it and then came in to talk to us and realized like how high the fees were between employee mitigation, PIFs, everything else and and left, you know, somewhat discouraged. But then we, you know, reached, reached out to her when we were doing to acknowledge that we are doing updated employee generation, because that was really the one where I think she was having a hard time understanding like why that would be such a big impact to go from, you know, change from a retail to that type of use. And, and our study really kind of validates that.
Yeah, because there will be fewer employees and it sounds like at least one of them is going to be her husband, who's already housed, obviously.
Yeah, there, there's some things included in the letter. I mean, she, she's writing it from just kind of a background perspective. You know, whether it's the actual owners or some of the employees or they hire, we're just looking at what the, the employee generation is. But I mean, I
So we would.
She does provide more insight on how they intend to.
So would we require mitigation if, say, you know, just the two of them were running this espresso bar?
Yeah.
We would.
Well.
The code requires.
Espresso bar to someone else, they, who wouldn't live there, they would acquire outside employees.
And we can't, we can't get in the position of monitoring whether they're the only two employees there.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and I, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
And I think that, that's part of initially when we were having the conversation, that's part as, you know, a prospective business owner, that's, that's probably how they're seeing it. But we're saying like, well, it's, you're still, you know, take, you need housing, you're taking up housing in the valley. Like, so you just need the.
Right. Just like she's trying to offset the fact that they're going to provide housing on their property, but.
Yeah. And that, and that's a little bit different. I mean, that's, I guess, interesting background, but we're really trying to tie it to the employee generation and and then really in particular, I mean, the, the study kind of bears out what we're, you know, we're, we're happy from the perspective that there are multiple categories. We don't have to have everything lumped in the one for retail food and beverage. You know, I think ultimately, because we used actually hers as an example in the first memo for these numbers is like, here's a, here's a, a pretty extreme example, a very small retail food and beverage. This is what they're, they pay, but this is what you know, they're saying. So we use that as an example. There, there's so many different categories that, you know, when you're, when you're updating, amending code, that's this complicated. It just takes a little bit of time and, and the council really wants to get it right. So they're, they're working through and being, being patient. And I think it's going back to them again in, in August. But in the meantime, since there is the provision for doing an exemption and we have some precedent in doing it. And this is really even a smaller scale with, with our own information. We thought this is a way for them to get going quicker than waiting for the process to conclude.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Keely, can we hear from you? Questions?
Sure. My one question is, where is this at with the town council? I saw that the memo from the consultant ERC was revised January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. How close, how close are we, do you think, to getting this done?
We're going to council first meeting in August, Keely. And the council did have some questions, as you might expect, knowing we have like several restaurateurs on our council, they had questions about the numbers around that as well as a couple of other things. So it's going to be another work session. So my guess is we're still looking at September at the earliest to actually be taking legislation for an ordinance for first and second reading on this. But I know the council would like to get there. They understand. You know, we're not on this, the best grounds right now in terms of having numbers that were basically, we took from Vale. And it's much better to have the town's own numbers that were done by our own next study.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I, I think also one of the things, the council is, you know, in discussions with beyond just the generation numbers is the percent that should be mitigated. So some of these numbers have changed. There's several that are lower than in Vale, like the, one of the retail food and beverage categories. There are some that are higher than what was previously, previously presented, like retail being an example. But I think the number that they're really, one of the things that they're probably debating most is currently, we, we require a thirty-five percent mitigation, which is just kind of like where they feel it should be mitigated. And so I think they're trying to decide like, should it be fifty percent? Should it be forty percent? You know, what that number is. So that's part of really discussion, they'll probably, you know, it'll play out more at the work session that really doesn't even have anything to do with the actual uh, generation numbers per se.
Yeah, that was really my only question. I think, I mean, I have a pretty good understanding of employee generation. We dealt with those at the county for a long time, but now they're Keystone's problem. So that's it for me on that, on this one.
Thank you, Keely. Mike, can we hear from you?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Interesting question. I, I did read the draft report. I have a question similar to Kaylee. And it sounds like it will be final soon and these exceptions will be a thing of the past and we're not setting up an unfortunate precedent. Because once the study's in place and council passes updated requirements, we won't see requests like this.
Uh, Mike, that's still to be determined. You know, because we have that provision right now that allows for that. I have heard offhand from council members that they'd like to tighten it down. So it's not so i- i- it's more limited people's opportunities to appeal what those numbers are once we've adopted our own. So, but whether that will, the door will be shut altogether or not, that's something we still have to have a discussion with the council about.
Um, fair enough. And then the top of page sixty-five spoke to no calculation be done on the indoor, or the calculation of the space be done on indoor only and not out across indoor and outdoor space. But then they give different numbers of employees per thousand square feet. Could someone summarize that for me? Because I, I've been around when we've had, you know, the roof at Modus, the roof at the new RMU building and some other areas where it seems to be a loophole in our code. And so does this clean that up?
Yeah. What they have, what EPS found in their study was that. Yeah, um, what they have, what EPS found in their study was that. When there was a relatively small amount of outdoor space compared to indoor space, that it really didn't increase the employee generation.
That was the twenty five percent.
Right. Twenty five percent. When it got over twenty five percent compared to the indoor space. Then there was an increase. And so they've recommended two different numbers and that's what you see here. So.
Yeah.
And that's, it, it's a little confusing and complicated. And so we're actually bringing in EPS to explain this to the council. Um, next month, um, because they, they just had some questions about that, but that's the intent. Is that they would be, um, based on the size of that outdoor space, it would or would not. Um, so I would think something like the rooftop at RMU, I'm guessing is more than twenty five percent of the total. Space of probably would be counted at a higher mitigation rate.
Okay. Um, that helps my understanding and it sounds like the town's on it.
Yeah. And I, I think like using the, the old RMU, which is still in operation, the pur- the purple building. That were the, the outdoor space, um, really is the majority of, of the space that would also play into it. But, um, going back a little further in history, where at the time of the approval of RMU, that predated any requirement for. Employee mitigation for any outdoor seating as well as PIFs and, and parking. But subsequent to that is when the council decided, took a look at requiring water PIFs, parking and employee mitigation for outside. Uh, seating. So that, that was really the last project that was approved without having to provide any of that.
Okay. That, that helps and I appreciate the background. Thank you.
And just, uh, just tagging on to Mike's comment there. I thought that where you were going, Mike, with that was the, um. Determination of square footage measured inside or out. And it seems that you're really talking about restaurants with outside space and inside space. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have no other comments. We have any public comments that, uh. Need to be addressed? Nobody online?
No one online.
There's nobody in here, so we can close the, uh, public portion of this. And Mark, we move on to the next item.
Um, well, weigh in if we could have each commissioner just weigh in if you agree with the, um, allowing this exception.
Alan? Uh, no, I, I agree, uh, with the granting the waiver. Um, main concerns, which I guess is with everything that we do is, you know, what happens down the road. I, I could see food creep, you know, all of a sudden they're, they have a, a George Foreman and they're doing paninis and. I think if there, if there's, uh, I actually think that they probably will, if they're successful, they'll need two people. Uh, in the mornings, but on average it'll still be one person for, per day, because they probably will close early afternoon. So. On a typical twelve hour, nine to nine schedule, they're probably only open, uh, you know. Uh, six of those hours or eight of those hours. Uh, but it's just how, how, that's just a question you guys always have, staff always has, is how do you monitor this? If they start adding food. And just a quick comment about maybe they'll actually encourage the Italian style of espressos. You go up, you get a ceramic cup and you down it and you move on. So. That's it. Only comments. I, I agree with it.
Um, I agree with it. Sounds like we have precedent of other cases where we've done this and seems like the. The powers to be are kind of behind us. So, yeah, not opposed.
Mike, since you're on full screen up there, I'm going to call on you next.
Uh, I concur. Thank you.
Keely?
Um, yeah, I also agree. I like that we're basing it off of some more accurate numbers. Um, even if they're not fully approved by the council yet, I think they're pretty far down the road and, um. I, I think that's way, that's much significantly better than what we currently have, which lumps everything in and doesn't actually, you know, accurately count. The, or account for the employees of a given business. So I, I support it.
I also support it. I think that this is a perfect example and, and I, and I think. I, I'm glad that the planning staff brought this to us, because, uh. I think it's a perfect example to, to kick off the new, the new numbers. So I concur.
Susan?
I agree.
I too concur with this. And I'm really happy that we have accurate, concrete numbers that we can refer to. Um, I just want to make a comment about what Alan just said. Brings up an interesting point. If someone is going to work a small portion of the day in this particular establishment. They have employee mitigation being made by the employer of that establishment. And they're probably going to another job where there's additional employee mitigation made. So I think this is a. The, the council's painting with a broad brush here and we can't get too concentrated on whether this number is exactly right or wrong. But at the end, everybody gets accommodated. All right. Well, thank, thanks for feedback. I will pass that along to the applicant. Mark, you're going to give town council update here?
I will, Mark. Um, and I mean, keep it real brief because, um, well, I was not there for it. But there wasn't a lot of planning issues that were frankly discussed at last week's meeting. The primary, um, one was that, as you guys had seen previously. The town project for, um, relocating food and beverage facility. From the Tiger Dredge Lot to the Parkway Center. Um, that was on a, that was, that was. Town project hearing that was approved by the town council. So, um, that's pretty much it. So they agreed with your assessment.
So is that a done deal? Do they have a contract with the, uh, for the real estate there for rental, with the property?
Yeah, it's my understanding they have some type of agreement. I don't know if it's been, the contract's been finalized or not, but that's the plan is to be moving on it this year. And Sarah may have some other information on timing. I'm not sure.
So we're likely to see some construction on that site soon.
Yeah, within, um, the next two to four weeks, you'll start seeing the excavation. Um, that's pending like a final agreement with the Kentrow Group, but it seems to be pre-solved.
Uh, yeah, I think the, I think James Phelps, you know, our public works director, I think you mentioned in the meeting that they're expecting the Doc Zilla structure to arrive. Mid-August.
Oh, um, just, uh, I wanted to apologize again for the late notice on canceling the, the meeting today. We had some issues come up, um, and number the other commissions were. Not getting, we getting some people canceling out, things like that. So decided to push out the training. We will contact you and let you know when that's rescheduled.
Okay. It is six ten and I'm going to adjourn, adjourn the meeting of. The sixteenth of July.
Get some sleep, Mike. I know where Keely is, so maybe she's got some daylight yet, it looks like.
I'm in, I'm in Denver.
So, you know, I've been thinking, um, I'm in ski towns in the Italian Alps, um. Eco-tourism, cultural, natural resource balance, uh, workforce housing issues, trans, public transportation. I think planning commission needs to make their next field trip here.
Um, I, I, I support that.
Staff would love your support with the, how is it be on that one?
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Bye, guys.
That in a minute, Sarah, uh, Sarah.